There is another motion out of closed.
Yes, I move that the school board recommend to the Virginia Board of Education that the license of employee A be revoked.
Second, moved by Mr. Alcaro, seconded by Dr. Akov. Could we have a roll call vote on that as well?
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Dr. Akov?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll have a roll call. Let's start with Mr. Holden.
Ross Holden, School Board Attorney.
Daphne Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall.
Jono Alcaro, at large.
Kate Akov, Jack Jewett District.
Judy Lee, Ravana District.
Graham Page, Miller District.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Opal Kendall, Student Representative.
Matthew Hawes, Superintendent.
Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Chandra Hayes, Assistant Superintendent.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Board.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Now let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next, we have our Moment of Silence. Tonight, I'd like to remember Mike Mountjoy, who was a teacher in our division, most recently at Lakeside. Thank you. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion for that?
I move we approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Mr. Alcaro. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda. Does someone like to make a motion revolving?
Chair Lee, I would like to pull the proposed FY25 CIP request for brief discussion.
Okay. Moved by Dr. Akov with the consent agenda with 4.4 pulled.
Do we need a second for that?
We need a second for that.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Dr. Berlin. So we'll have discussion on that.
Yes, I would like to suggest to my colleagues on the board that we reconsider the order of the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee's recommendations, specifically to move up the elevator additions, which have been on the CIP for at least the past three years and perhaps longer. I think there are real safety issues involved, and also move up the special education facility renovations, moving them at least up above six with land acquisition for the Western feeder pattern. And additionally, to the degree that the elevator additions line up with the proposed modernization at the high school, middle, and elementary schools, to fold that into those budgets.
I agree with that, and I also want to say that for the renovations as a whole, and this is just using the $20 million number for the middle schools that was the number last year, we still rose by over $11 million in terms of renovations needed this year versus last year. And so we've gone from 104.6 million asked for last year to 115.2. It's like paying off a credit card, you know, doing the minimum payment every month. There are a lot of reasons why this particular, these particular renovation projects need more funding, and I request that of the Board of Supervisors when their staff is looking into monies to be dedicated. This helps with jobs in the community, pride in teachers, the workers, the students, and the parents. This is important because at the rate of 3, $2.8 million a year, this is still going to take 38 years to get it done. This should be done at $10 million a year and get it done in 13 years.
I strongly support Dr. Akov, Mr. Alcaro's comments. To me, this is such a critical crisis for us as a school division. When I, and as I said during the presentation, and I'm going to continue saying this, the fact that my son went here, was born, went here, and graduated college, and potentially grad school in the time before we build another school, is abysmal. And this is something that I think this board going forward is going to continue to push for. And it's not about, it's about the new build, and it's also about the significant renovations that our schools need, just to keep our kids safe. As a former special education teacher, the fact that the Board of Supervisors has not pushed forward our elevator renovations, which is an absolute safety issue and an ADA issue. I do not want to be on the board when there is an emergency and we cannot get a child, a parent, or a teacher down a set of stairs because there's no available elevator. And I think we need to continue to keep this at the front of our mind, in how are we going to continue to work as a school system, in partnership with our Board of Supervisors, and in partnership with the state to continue to think about how do we bring more money here? Because, as Mr. Alcaro said, like, we are paying off an unbelievable amount of debt because we have not put enough money towards our physical buildings in the last 25 years. And we need to do better for our kids and for our teachers and for our families.
I have a comment also. I agree with what Dr. Akov and Mr. Alcaro have said about moving the items up in the rankings. But I also have another comment related to the front cover of the booklet. I know that we in the county sort of really pride ourselves on our diversity and equity and our anti-racism policy. And when you look at the picture on the cover, that picture does not represent the diversity of our student body. And I think anything that we put out as a department, any type of literature that would have pictures, I think, should really represent the true picture of how diverse our student body is. So I think that really needs some adjustment. And again, I really commend the Long Range Planning Committee, but that's one item that really sort of was glaring to me, the picture that's on the front cover.
Maya and Roslyn, do you have enough from these points to work with for that?
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Akov, Mr. Alcaro, and Dr. Berlin. I also very strongly agree with those recommendations and the fact that we really need more at this time.
So could we change the motion, withdraw 4.4?
Yes.
Until the next meeting? For review?
For review, yes. So we'll withdraw that for review at our next meeting?
Yep.
Okay. So, sorry, could you do that?
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 4.4, which will, we will be presented at, will be on the consent agenda next month.
Second.
Next meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now we have announcements. Dr. Haas?
I did, earlier today, I did ask Dr. Kaiser if she could just give the board a quick recap of the community information session we hosted last night about reframing the narrative.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Haas, and good evening, Chair Lee and school board members. Last evening, we held our second community information session for the 2023-24 academic year, featuring our reframing the narrative curriculum. The community information session featured key contributors to the program development, as well as current practitioners, who spoke about the value this initiative has brought to our students and teachers. Our panelists for the evening included Dr. Jahari Harris, Associate Professor of Educational Psychology from Kennesaw State University, Mr. Ed Brooks, Albemarle County Local Government and Program Coordinator for Yancey School Community Center, Ms. Cara Candidate, Chief Executive Officer of Virginia Tribal Education Consortium, Mr. Care, Carey Candidate, State Tribal Education Partnership Step, Project Coordinator, Virginia Tribal Education Consortium, Ms. Neely Mitten, Lead Coach for K-12 Social Studies, and Project Manager for the Reframing the Narrative Initiative, and Ms. Kate Gary, Elementary Teacher and Diversity Resource Teacher from Broadus Wood Elementary School. The panelists discussed the initial partnership with James Madison's Montpelier, and how we received a Charlottesville area Community Foundation Strengthening Systems Grant to fund an initiative known as Reframing the Narrative, an inclusive and whole truth teaching of the history of our nation, Commonwealth, and local communities with the goal of preparing students for democracy and citizenship in our increasingly diverse society. Ms. Neely shared how groups of K-12 teachers have partnered with public history, community, and higher education partners to learn whole truth and inclusive history and civics content to build educators' capacity to teach through inquiry. Ms. Mitten also shared the data showing the power that inquiry design paired with reframing the narrative has had on student performance. Additionally, Ms. Kate Gary illustrated how reframing increases rigor, teaches students to build their literacy skills, and think critically about the world through lesson plans and student artifacts. Our panelists also included the Virginia Tribal Education Consortium, or VTAC, an ACPS community partner that supports and is governed under the seven federally recognized sovereign tribes. VTAC is dedicated to the empowerment, betterment, and ultimate success of native youth and tribal citizens in Virginia by helping to facilitate educational opportunities, career training, and ensuring accessibility to accurate historical and current information on Virginia Indians. Cara and Carey Candidates shared how teaching an accurate account of history can create an understanding of our past, but also a deeper connection of history can create an understanding of our past and also a deeper connection to current events. Ed Brooks shared how powerful reframing the narrative is for students to learn about their local history and how historical events impact our community today. Mr. Brooks also emphasized Yancey School Community Center's commitment to heritage and history through sharing the accomplishments of the incredible individuals of the African-American community in Esmond. With the support of our community partners, collaboration, and other school divisions across the state, and the commitment and focus within our division on reframing the narrative, the inquiry-based lessons support and increase students' knowledge, their knowledge base, facilitate critical thinking, inferencing, and the use of primary sources, allowing students to make conclusions for themselves. The student outcomes that were shared speaks to the effectiveness of this approach. In world history, across all high schools, over 91% of our students earn verified credit through this process. In World History One, across all high schools, 90% of our students earned verified credit through this process. At Monticello High School specifically, teachers close their achievement gap with multilingual learners, or English learners, through this process. This means that our multilingual learners perform just as well as all of our learners. Being an English learner is no longer a predictive factor for student success. And we have had our Monticello High School's Social Studies and English Learner Department Chairs engage in professional learning with all of our secondary social studies teachers. The Social Studies CAT, or Content Area Team, is being trained in Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, or PSIO, which is a method for teaching multilingual learners so they can help support teachers at all schools in this approach. This type of study promotes critical, deep thinking that not only aids students' assessments, but also generates great life skills that will serve students well beyond K-12 education. We would like to thank all of the content experts for developing the reframing the narrative, Ms. Mitten's leadership, and the dedicated teachers that embrace this engaging approach to instruction. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to make one announcement. I made this at the interviews for the Rio School Board Member vacancy. I just wanted to give another outline of the timeline. So we had the interviews on October 19th. Today, we're having our scheduled work session, which is not involved in that. On November 9th, we'll have our scheduled business meeting, which will also include a public hearing to receive input on the candidates. And then December 14th, we will announce, we'll make our decision and announce the appointment. And then January 11th, 2024, will be the first meeting with a new member for everyone marking their calendars at home. So that was my only announcement. Any other board member announcements? Nope. Okay, next we have public comment. Ellen Osborne.
All right. We invite and actively seek the public's input in matters relevant to school board governance, and provide time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance will not be tolerated. Anyone who willfully disrupts this meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting may be ejected by the chair. Individuals and/or organizations wishing to speak during public comment must sign in with the clerk. Sign-up is available online beginning 9:00 a.m. on the Monday of the meeting week until 3:30 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Speakers should adhere to the following protocol. State your name and address or your voting district. Address comments to the school board as a whole. Limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or school division operations. Give written statements and other supporting material to the clerk. If you are unable to complete the presentation in the time allotted, a copy of supporting materials will be provided to school board members. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. A commenter will be required to discontinue their comments after three minutes. A color-coded light system is used to time presentations. The yellow light means the speaker is two minutes into the presentation, and the red light means the speaker is at the three-minute limit of the presentation and must wrap up. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other audible form of support or non-support be used. If members of the public wish to show their support for a speaker, they may stand or raise their hands. When multiple comments on the same topic have been presented, the chair may request additional comments on the topic be limited to those who have new information to present. Debate and dialogue with the school board are not allowed. You said the projection system is reserved for staff-scheduled agenda item presentations only. And tonight, we have one speaker, Mr. Paul McCarter.
Definitely not my first time here.
My name is Paul McCarter. I am with, live in the Scottsville District. I came here to speak regarding the extension of Dr. Haas's contract that was a surprise to everybody in the public because it wasn't, there was no public discourse or public input. Actually, you know what? I have a whole write-up here to talk about how, like, surprised people were that this announcement didn't include any public input, wasn't at a public forum, wasn't on the agenda, and was just kind of announced at a meeting like this, that there wasn't a lot of people to attend. But to be honest with you, it wasn't a surprise at all. It's pretty much how you guys work. You have these little flyers around that say, "Get involved, give us your input." At the beginning, Ms. Osborne said that, you know, "We welcome public input." No, you don't. You welcome people who agree with you. If you agree with you, your opinion will be heard. If not, you have no interest in talking to it. You love to send out surveys. If the surveys don't return the answer you want, nobody ever hears about the survey ever again. It disappears. If it's about a subject that you don't think you're going to get the answer that you want, no surveys happen. This isn't an attack on Dr. Haas. Congratulations, Dr. Haas. If I was gifted a two-year extension with a pay raise after not performing my job, I would take it in a heartbeat. It's not his fault. It's your fault. Ms. Berlin made a comment about how there hasn't been a school built in 20 years. That's amazing. No, it's not. You guys don't do your job. You don't listen to public input. Most of you run unopposed. Ms. Osborne's running unopposed. I apologize to Scottsville District. That won't happen again. There is just nothing that makes the community feel it's worth it to come talk to you all. Why? All we asked for, 1,000 people signed a petition, all we asked for is that you did some due diligence before you handed out an extension. That's it. Just do some due diligence. You love sending out surveys. There wasn't a single one that said, "Do you feel like ACPS is in the right direction? Do you feel like the superintendent is doing his job?" None. There were no focus groups. You were told that people were afraid because of fear of retaliation. What was the response? Chairman Lee sent me a link to the human resources person, said he'll pass this to anybody who feels like there, you know, there's a threat of retaliation. How about take that as an input and give a forum for people to be able to do stuff to where they don't have to fear that their job's at risk? But no, you don't. You sit here, you don't do your job, you don't build our schools when we need to, you don't teach our kids to read, you extend people without any input, and you'll just keep doing it. And so I don't know why anybody comes up here and talks. Maybe that's why I'm the only one here. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Next, we have school board and superintendent business.
So I just wanted, just kind of looking at the weekly check-in, I wanted to let you know about something we do that Dr. Irizari helps me with, which has turned out to be, I think, a lot of fun for people. I had Mark Leach generate a list, a random list of students all over the school system, and make sure that he added weight for diversity so that, you know, you'd have a variety of backgrounds pop up. Once a week, in the weekly check-in, we put, when we send it out, we have the student's name, and then we ask people to be the first person to email Eric Irizari, to let them know that they know that student, because our mission statement says that we will know every student. And so we have the student's name, and it's within minutes typically of when the check-in goes out that we get an email from a staff member. It could be a counselor, it could be a teacher. Last week, we sent out one asking for someone to identify Maxton Papas, and he, in fact, is a second grader at Croze Elementary School. And his teacher, just within, like, maybe, I think Eric said it was in, like, 13 minutes, and this, the check-in usually goes out at 6:30 in the morning, emailed him and said, "I know him. He's a second grader at Croze. He's one of the wonderful second graders at Croze. He recently got a great-looking haircut." And to me, I mean, that's knowing students. When a student comes in the school and you can see that they've got a haircut, or maybe, you know, they're a different backpack or something like that, you know that kid. And so every week, we do that. And what happens then is, what I tell, what I tell, what I say in the check-in is, if you identify the student, please, we're going to get you to talk with the student and have them tell you a book they would like to have. And then that person gets to give them the book, whatever book they want. And then Eric actually started an account with Ravana Apparel to, like, do on-demand printing for us so that we have Alamo County Public Schools and Office of Community Engagement swag, like, you know, hats and things like that. So what the staff member then gets, and we don't mention that in the check-in, but what they get is opportunity to order something from Ravana. So Eric's made it a lot of fun, and it really makes me proud that our teachers, our principals, our custodians, everybody knows the kids so well that they can, they can pinpoint that child. And one time, we had one this year, and there were several people that identified the student who was a high school student, and there was an elementary teacher that identified, two elementary teachers from when they were in elementary school, a middle school teacher that knew, remembered the student, and then, of course, their, their current high schools. The other thing, I just really want to thank Baker Butler for a great visit on Tuesday. We're talking, tonight, we'll talk a little we'll talk a little bit about the Bellwether Report and choosing a new reading curriculum. Talked about some of the things we're doing this year to shore up being a reader, including the Ufly curriculum approach, and I got to see that in action at Baker Butler. The students having fun with it, the teachers really being energetic and working really hard. So I want to give a shout out to Baker Butler and thank them for a great visit. That was what I wanted to mention tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. Any business from school board members? Okay, thank you. Next, we have our school division work session. First, we have Framework for Adult Learning, Megan Wood, Instructional Coaching Model, Craig Domer, and Quarterly Assessments, Dallas Hitt.
Good evening, board members. Pat McLaughlin, Assistant Superintendent for Strategic Planning, and I'm just really excited about the work session that we've put together for you tonight, as Ms. Lee stated. Our first part is going to be an update on some of the key projects that are moving forward from the Bellwether recommendations to give you an idea of where those stand and how we're moving those forward and making an impact already. And then the second half of the work session is going to be you all engaging in some work that's going to help us move one of those ideas forward around our theory of change. So I'm going to turn things over to Jamie Gelner, and I hope you have a fruitful session tonight.
Good evening, and welcome to the work session. My name's Jamie Gelner, Director of Special Projects, Program Evaluation and Department Improvement. All right, so here's our-
I apologize, Jamie, while you're pulling that up. Our screens aren't working. Are you working? Okay, I didn't know if you had it. Apologies for the interruption. You're good. Go.
Okay. Here's our agenda for tonight. We're going to talk through this status board, which has been posted on the instructional audit page on the website. Ms. Megan Wood will talk about the Framework for Adult Learning, which Bellwether calls Unified Vision for Adult Learning. Mr. Domer will talk about the Instructional Coaching Model. Dr. McLaughlin will come back to talk Quarterly Assessments, and then Mr. Domer will talk Algebra I again. We'll take a quick break and come back for our work session. So tonight's session is aligned with our vision and mission, and our theory of change will end with our mission statement when we create it. And our values and strategic goals help drive this work as well. So we've created a status board that lists all of the actions we're taking by recommendation. As previously stated, these projects vary in scope and size. The status board will be posted on our website. It has been posted on our website. So this is just one page. I picked it because it was the smallest, not because it has lots of checks on it. But on each of the pages, at the top, it has the actual recommendation from the Bellwether Report, and then in blue, bold, is the project. So this one is Instructional Walks. Next to it, in black, is the status of the project. It's in progress. And then the timeframe, which this one will be annual. Underneath lists the different project components. And then if there is a checkbox, it means that the task has been completed. So there are several projects. There's about 15 slides in total that give all the updates. And so you can see all the way to the right, the timeline for completion for each of the components. So let's take a dive into our first project, which was Bellwether's recommendation for Unified Vision for Adult Learning. And Ms. Megan Wood, Director of Professional Learning, will present our ideas on where to start.
Thank you, Ms. Gelner. Good evening, members of the board. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share with you updates to our progress in addressing the Bellwether's recommendations specifically related to adult learning and professional learning in ACPS. As you know, Bellwether recommended that we develop a strategic approach to ensuring that our staff has the knowledge and skills to meet the needs of all students. In order to move this work forward, Bellwether's key initiative to develop a unified vision for adult learning serves as a springboard to what will become a more expansive and intensive review and redevelopment of what professional learning is and can be in ACPS for both instructional staff as well as support staff. However, for the purpose of tonight's presentation, I will focus on providing an overview of this process and discuss our near-term steps in creating a strategic approach to professional learning for instructional staff, including teachers, administrators, teaching assistants, counselors, EDEP workers, and other instructional staff. Our intent will be to mirror this work for the support staff as well. Do you know why it stopped moving? Oh, there we go. There we go. Linda Darling-Hammond best captures the importance of effective professional learning by identifying two important outcomes. The learning will result in change to teacher practice, and it will positively impact student learning. It is through this lens that we have embarked on our study and recommendations for what professional learning should look like in Alamo County. Thus, directly relating to our mission and ending the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities of our students, of our children's success through high-quality teaching and learning. The first part of this process includes creating a framework for professional learning in ACPS similar to the Framework for Quality Learning. This framework will be the foundation of our philosophy and structure of professional learning and will be grounded in research and evidence-based practices. This list provides an overview of some of the resources we are using to support the development of this framework. The Carnegie Study, Learning Forward, EAB, and the Learning Policy Institute all utilize findings from evidence-based practices in adult and professional learning. It's important to note that this is not a comprehensive list, but a starting point for us. Throughout these resources, key themes have emerged regarding best practices and characteristics of high-quality professional learning that result in impacting student outcomes. These themes include learning experiences that are designed to be content-specific, engage participants in active learning, be collaborative, model effective practice, include coaching and expert support, provide time for feedback and reflection, and be sustained over time. As we think about designing and implementing a comprehensive framework for professional learning for our staff, it will be important to make sure that we incorporate these characteristics into our approach. We've identified the following as our current near-term steps to building a systematic approach to adult learning in ACPS. In alignment with the Bellwether recommendations to solicit more feedback from stakeholders, we feel that it's important to gather more data about needs specifically related to professional learning. As a result, our initial steps include developing and engaging with a professional learning steering committee as well as developing a needs assessment to be administered in the next couple of weeks to all instructional staff. We will use this information gathered from both these feedback mechanisms to draft, develop, and finalize the framework for professional learning. Once the framework is completed, we will then begin to build out logic models tied to the framework. Based on our initial research, we anticipate that these will be some of the major components of our strategic approach to professional learning. Once we have received feedback and recommendations from our instructional staff, we will finalize the plan and begin to develop logic models around the identified components. You will notice that one of our strategic approaches to professional learning includes the instructional coaching. Moving instructional coaching under professional learning is one way we have begun to reimagine this model. Bellwether's recommendations regarding the coaching model included aligning practices between equity specialists, LTIs, and instructional coaches, shifting the coaching model from an opt-in approach to one that positions instructional coaching as part of the comprehensive system of adult learning and targeting support for schools and teachers. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Craig Domer to share more about the reframing of our instructional coaching model.
Thank you. I'm Craig Domer, Director of Instruction for Tiered Supports. Over my career in ACPS, I've been a teacher, a lead coach, principal, and now Director of Instruction. I'd like to thank Dr. Hayes and Ms. Wood for letting me participate in leading this work around redesigning our coaching model. The Bellwether recommendations, as Ms. Wood alluded to, are to reimagine the coaching model to target support in schools and teachers that need it most and to position it as part of our systematic approach to adult learning. It's discussed in root causes two and four in the Bellwether Report. Something that's clear in the report is that Bellwether does value instructional coaching, as is clear in the professional development research as well. Annenberg did a meta-analysis and a report on instructional coaching in January of 2022, and they had three key findings that evidence strongly suggests a well-designed instructional coaching program improves teacher practice and student outcomes. Coaching programs that incorporate essential features of high-quality professional development are more likely to improve that practice, and novice teachers who receive coaching are more likely to improve student outcomes and stay in the teaching profession. This graphic was shared with you in the spring on our work session on instructional coaching. You'll see the ACPS mission statement as well as the coaching model mission and the underlying practices that feed that mission. As you read through these things, you'll see that they align to coaching and professional development best practices and our mission statement in Alamo County Public Schools. I think a lot of the tenants and underlying principles of our current coaching model are aligned with best practices and with student outcomes in mind. However, some of our practices, policies, and protocols around the coaching model may not have adapted with the growing gaps in student achievement and do not necessarily give us the outcomes that we want, which brings us to how we're thinking about redesigning the model. Listed now are kind of eight design elements that coaching models across the country use to try and target their model to achieve the outcomes that a school division would want. It's kind of within these design elements, in addition to some others, we will gather feedback from stakeholders and complete in-depth research analysis to make sure that our model is aligned with best practice. One major area of these design elements is the assignment of coaches. Some models use permanent assignment, and others rotate coaches among schools and after several years. Some models put coaches in one school, and our model currently puts coaches in three schools. Some models are school-managed versus centrally managed, and our model kind of distributes coaches based on number of teachers versus differentiated support, which was recommended by Bellwether. We currently hire internal candidates only. Other models use external and internal. There's a design element around pedagogical generalist versus a content expert, whether your model prioritizes that novice support or veteran support and implementation, and whether teachers working with coaches is more voluntary or mandatory. Our goals over the next couple of months is to get increased stakeholder feedback. We're going to conduct structured sessions with principals, coaches, lead coaches, and teachers. We feel that Bellwether did a nice job gathering feedback and providing recommendations, but based on, I think, public comment and interests around the coaching model, more people want their voices heard. We are also gathering information from other school divisions on how they design their coaching models and their job embedded professional development models. And I just wanted to close tonight with something we're kind of keeping in mind about why it's important. The redesign of this coaching model will empower ACPS educators to change and better their practices in order to impact student learning. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McLaughlin.
Thanks, Craig. Board members, as you know, one of the root causes of gaps in student achievement that was identified by Bellwether was that instructional tasks did not consistently reflect the level of rigor required by SOL testing, and a key strategy for addressing this root cause was to increase the frequency and utility of formative assessments, including common instructional tasks to inform both student need and adult instructional practice. So to align our practice with this strategy, the division has developed and is currently implementing a quarterly interim assessment model division-wide. Quarterly interim assessments provide data on student learning at manageable intervals so that instructional and instructional leadership adjustments can be made. They're administered at the end of the first three quarters of the school year to all students in math, excuse me, reading, science, reading and science in grades three through eight, and also for select high school courses. The quarterly assessments are aligned to Division pacing guides and assess all standards that have been scheduled to be taught to students at the end of each quarter. As schools review the results of the quarterly assessments, we encourage them to look at the results standard by standard so they can gauge areas of relative strength and relative weakness for their students. With this data, they can tap into the power of the professional learning communities to learn from each other and to adjust instruction based on the needs of their students. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention how thankful I am to our teams from instruction and from strategic planning for getting these quarterly assessments up and running in a very short amount of time. This work began this summer with updating our pacing guides to ensure that our courses are in full alignment with SOL standards and blueprints. The instructional team then built the quarterly assessments that mapped out, that mapped to our pacing guides, and our first window for quarterly assessments just closed this afternoon. Next week, we'll begin conversations with principals about how they can assess and use these results with their staff to adapt instruction. And this is the first time that I can remember since I've been in the division that we've had consistent quarterly assessments across the school system, and I think it's going to go far in helping us to meet our goals. So I thank you for your time tonight, and I'm going to hand things back to Craig to discuss the work that's taking place in regard to our Algebra I courses.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. I'm talking about Algebra I tonight. I really would like to highlight Ms. Melissa Mitchum, Lead Coach for Mathematics, and Dr. Dallas Hitt, who is our Director of Strategic Planning. They've been really, I think, leading this work, but they both were unable to join us tonight. So the recommendation from Bellwether around Algebra I was to invest in high-quality instructional materials and to improve our current middle school students' Algebra I skills with a focus on ninth-grade Algebra I. At the time the report was written, those students were in eighth grade, and we are focusing on them in ninth grade this year. Additionally, we're focusing on our secondary math curriculum and our system of RTI supports. Starting in the summer, we assembled a design team of high school Algebra I teachers that represent all of our high schools as well as some central office stakeholders and parents with our goal to identify changes in instructional practices, including our intervention strategies to support the students in Algebra I. The team meets monthly to work on strategies, to see how students are doing, in addition to the division-level PLC meetings. So division-level PLC meets five or six times a year, and this group is additionally meeting monthly to review data and to come up with interventions for those students in Algebra I. One of the first things that the team did was identify a need for a diagnostic tool to identify gaps in skills and knowledge essential to success in Algebra I, which was also a recommendation in the Bellwether Report. We are currently vetting and piloting some intervention tools that provide adaptive practice, differentiated instruction, and actionable data reports. At the DPLC on Monday, the Algebra I teachers will be discussing the interim quarterly assessment data from quarter one and making plans on how to reteach any missed standards in quarter two. In addition, a cohort from the Algebra I design team are involved with the UVA Partnership for Leaders in Education at Darden, and we will be meeting in November to engage in some design thinking around a system change plan around Algebra I readiness. That group kind of broadened the question just from Algebra I to providing equitable access to rigorous mathematics for our students to ensure readiness for success in Algebra I, no matter when students take it. I think that concludes our kind of quick updates on these four key initiatives, and we'll open it to questions.
I have one for you right away. I know Bellwether says invest in high-quality materials. Are the intervention tools that you're talking about with algebra, is that what you're talking about? Or is there another layer of?
The intervention tools are kind of our short-term solution to help support those students. Right now, that design team, both across the high schools and the smaller cohort, is also looking into kind of high-quality instructional materials and curriculum to review and adopt moving forward.
So that would be for the next school year?
Yes. No.
There will be some changes to the math standards. There are some changes that are coming this spring, and so our current plan is to do that work next school year with an adoption for math the following year. Is that correct, Chandra? Okay.
When you say changes, those are VDO changes to math standards that would affect our decision on?
That's correct.
I'm unclear about the intervention tools. Is that something that you guys have created or found, or can you speak a little bit more about that?
Sure. We are investigating publishers' intervention tools. So right now, some of the middle schools use Alex Math or have started using Alex. So we are, the Algebra I teachers are reviewing that material as well as WAGgle from HMH Publishers, and Mathia is another program as well. So they are kind of reviewing those three programs. We are We are also interested in the state programs coming down for high, all in Virginia, high-intensity tutoring.
Thank you.
I have one question that's a broad question in terms of process, if I might. And that is that in the original Bellwether document, it talked, as you did in here, Mr. Dahmer, about high-quality instructional materials. And in there, it talked about how we had a lot of the high-quality instructional materials. And then the further it went in to the report, it kept saying, "And buy, purchase, high-quality instructional materials." And what I, my question is, is what has been our process for determining what high-quality instructional materials to buy in the past? And what is it that Bellwether is recommending that we do that's different? Because otherwise, it sounds like it's just kind of the same thing.
So I would, I'll just weigh in with one comment. I think that's a great question, Jono. I think I alluded before that, like, you take Being a Reader, for example. That did not go through the kind of selection process that Bellwether recommended. What it went through was kind of an older way of doing things, which is appropriate for some things and maybe not appropriate for others, but often you don't realize it until later, when you start to evaluate it. Being a Reader, what, the division many years ago, I think when my children were in elementary school, they started to use a product by Collaborative Classroom called Being a Writer. It was very popular, and teachers liked it, kind of spread around to different elementary schools, and it's effective. And then we didn't, at that point, we didn't have a reading curriculum. And so there was a lot of conversation about adopting that. And so there were schools, I think Stone Robinson was, well, I know Stone Robinson was using Being a Reader, and the teachers there were experiencing success with it. They liked using it. It was, it's a good program, and it was based on more of a balanced diet of literacy. So not just phonics, not a great, not a huge emphasis on phonics. Phonics are part of it, and it is evidence-based curriculum. So it's not that it was an ineffective curriculum. It's just not as effective in terms of what we now know in the intervening years about the science of reading and the importance of phonics very early and a lot of repetition with that. So that, that just kind of spread around the county. The board never approved it. The board never saw it. It just spread. And there are many, many things that just kind of can do that. We are trying to become more disciplined and, at the same time, get greater input from our educators around the county before making these big decisions. And also making it in such a way that you can harness all of the professional learning at one time, have the power of scaling up so that everybody can be doing the same thing at the same time and learn alongside each other and learn with each other. And that's the difference that you see in the Bellwether recommendations. What it basically is saying is be intentional, do the work upfront, evaluate, get input from every person that's probably going to use it, and then make the decision to do it and build in the professional development upfront before you do the implementation. Takes a lot more discipline. It's more modern, but in the long run, it will be more impactful. And the perfect storm here is that the state also mandated that we, you draw from one well of state-approved curriculum. And I think that's, that's very positive for us because it narrows the choices down to phonics-based instructional programs that have really been well-vetted at the state level. So you have that uniformity then, and we're not trying to look at a big, broad array of items to choose. And the committees right now, the committee is down, is starting to narrow it down to a couple of choices, but we can have greater confidence in that because there's been input from all the schools, and we started with the smallest from the state.
Thank you. It's a good explanation of the process. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I have a question about the Algebra I program. I know that in the past, there's been a problem with some of our minority students being able to enroll in Algebra I at a certain grade level. And so with what we are doing now, will that be addressing that problem?
So the immediate problem that was being addressed this year, the one that we had the time to turn around the quickest, was our ninth-grade curriculum, our ninth-grade Algebra I courses. We don't see that disparity in ninth grade because we've got a lot of kids who haven't taken Algebra I when they're in middle school. Kind of second step, and if you look at the status board that Jamie alluded to at the beginning, it'll have some more steps outlined about how are we going to address getting more representative portions of our population into Algebra I before they come out of eighth grade, so that they're not in Algebra I when they get to the ninth grade. And so that's kind of a bigger lift. It's going to take a little bit more time for us to get there and develop strategies. You may remember Bellwether talking about things like summer bridge camps to take kids who might not, who might need a little bit of extra support before they go into Algebra I, to give them that support in the summer so that they're ready to go when they hit the ground in that class in the fall. So that is in there. You can see that in the status board with some timelines around it, and that'll be coming within the next couple of school years.
Okay. Or then another question related to the instructional coaches. I know when we had the workshop in the spring, it was voluntary. And so is, has that changed? Is there some way that if we see a teacher that really needs work, that it becomes a mandatory process instead of being volunteer for instructional coaching services?
I would say that if a principal sees a teacher that they feel would need some kind of plan of improvement, we've always made that coaching mandatory as part of those plans. As far as principals directing coaches in school buildings to work with teachers, that I think is part of what we're considering for the redesign. I think that we have heard from principals loud and clear that they would like more contact with coaches and be able to work, have coaches more invested in school visions. And I think in general, we're kind of supportive of that idea as we go through. We'll probably have a more in-depth or several presentations on coaching as we get the feedback and put things into redesign. There are lots of, I would say that coaches currently spend a lot of time around novice teachers. We have more novice and provisionally licensed teachers in this division currently than we did when the model was designed. And so some of that is about capacity of time. But I do know that this year, we are working with principals, the lead coaches are working with principals, that if they feel that a teacher or a PLC needs support, we are prioritizing being able to get a coach into those rooms and into that PLC.
Okay. Or then my last question is about the CRT program. Is that still being incorporated into everything else that we are doing? That's not being pushed to the side in any way, right?
That's correct. We still have an expectation that all of our teachers in the division get either a full certification or a micro-credential within three years of being hired or five years of when, when we set that expectation. At our next board meeting, we will be presenting the state of the division, which has some data embedded in that as to, as the progress we're making toward meeting that goal.
Okay, thanks.
I would also just quickly add that that is one process improvement around coaching that we've made this year. Ms. Wood and Ms. Mitchell and Mr. Todd, who oversee the learning technology integration specialists, the coaches, and the equity specialists have been having joint meetings with those groups once a month in order to kind of align their practice for the Bellwether report and also to be able to make all of those coaches kind of familiar with CRT and how to coach teachers for it so that it's more streamlined to work on instructional best practices within the kind of realm of CRT.
Thanks.
I have a question about the professional learning kind of work. I spent a bunch of time last night looking at the schedule and choices for both divisional staff and for instructional staff, which is super excited to see. You know, one of the concerns we had heard from many teachers and staff members is there just aren't enough choices. And so it definitely seemed like there are a lot of choices, as well as a lot of things very specific on concerns that we've brought up, like science of reading and multiple levels, depending kind of where you're sitting. So really excited to see that. Just what kind of feedback after that day happens, kind of a week from Monday, or Monday, actually? Or do you get the surveys or, because I, as you're kind of thinking about this longer term, some of the feedback that you'll be getting from this day right at the beginning, I think, can help. So I'm just curious how, it's almost like you're on these two parallel paths that I know you're, you're trying to bring together. So just love to hear a little bit more about how you kind of get feedback after the fact.
Yeah. So what we're, in, I would say, within the next week, the needs assessment that I mentioned earlier is going to go out, and that's more of a 30,000-foot view on PD. And then we'll use that to narrow getting more feedback back. So we'll use that to kind of narrow and get more targeted, specific feedback. After events, after we do professional learning, we do have, we do survey the staff and ask what they found was effective, what they would like more on, you know, all of the logistical things. So we do get specific feedback about events. One of the things that we are looking to utilize soon is that our professional learning management system has the opportunity to automatically send out surveys once courses are completed. And so we're going to look at, we're currently in the process of getting training on that system so that we can make sure that we're really consistent in soliciting feedback. One of the things I think we have room to grow in, and I'm wrestling around with a bunch of different people, is how do we, like, three weeks to six weeks later, ask, "How is that impacting your practice now?" And where do you need, you know, like, we do the immediate feedback, but then there's also that follow-up feedback about six weeks out that we need to start looking at collecting too.
That's great.
Yeah.
And the other question I have is about the formative testing. And we're, we're only doing that in kind of grades and courses for which we are, the students would be taking in SOL. Is that true or not true? And let me, like, I'll hold it with it, because what I'm, I'm continuing to wrestle with, as I know we all are, these middle schoolers and high schoolers who aren't reading. And so we might be talking about two separate things. One is, like, we'll be getting better assessments on them once we kind of are able to implement some of this high-targeted, intensive tutoring. But is there any, or, you know, do these two paths come together? Or is one about kind of SOL tests and reading would come in something else? Because I continue to worry about these kids who, you know, based on their SOL scores and reading, but they're not going to be, they're at a grade level that reading is no longer tested, so we don't know where they're sitting and what progress they're making or not.
So reading's tested in every grade, third through eighth.
Right.
So, so all through our middle schools. And then we have, well, 11th grade is our, is our official reading year, right, when they take an SOL test. We do have reading tests developed for ninth and 10th grade as well.
Oh, awesome.
So that we can see where students are. So it was, I hesitated to put up the list of the high schools because they're so diverse. We've got math tests all the way up through calculus for, for kids with quarterly assessments, but we don't have, there's such diversity of classes at the high school level, we don't have every single class that takes quarterly assessments. But to your point, absolutely. You know, we want to, to do that. One of the things that I, where we don't have common quarterly assessments is in our K through 2 grades. And so we look at, we look at things like vowels, which is, you know, a new reading assessment that the state rolled out this year to tell us where kids are and what they need. And again, I think the, the power of our quarterly assessments, the way that they are currently written, is that they are absolutely aligned to our standards. And teachers, when they parse out that data, are really going to be looking not so much at what percentage of my kids got a pass on this or what percentage of my kids got a fail, but looking at my class as a whole, which standards are we strong in and which ones are we weaker in? Is, is there a standard around comprehension of nonfiction that is in there that I see, man, the whole class, regardless of whether they passed or not, didn't do well on that? That's where I know I've got to focus. But then they can also get down to the individual student level and, and develop an individual plan that can be complemented by things like high-intensity tutoring based on some of those results.
Thanks.
Two quick questions. One may be for Megan Wood. I know I should know this, and I think I possibly did once. What are the specific requirements that we have for teachers taking professional development classes? And I know we do require something about CRT, but are there requirements in terms of content or requirements in terms of number of credits per year? Yes, no?
Yeah. The state requires, and they've just shifted to, and Claire, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they've just shifted to 10 years to get a recertification, but in those 10 years, you have to earn a certain number of recertification points, and it used to be 180, and it's 360 now, right? And so the points are earned by hours. You have to engage in five hours of professional learning in a content in order to receive, to begin to receive points for it. The district does have some required professional development activities we expect people to do, for example, responsive classroom and developmental designs. Their cultural responsive teaching obviously is one of the in-house things that we've developed, but there are required professional learning that teachers do have to engage in as well.
Okay. Thank you for refreshing.
Yeah.
I rebooted just now.
If I could add to that, one of the things that we also recognize is, as we do roll out different, new and different curriculum, curricula, that it is important that we have standardized and require professional learning. So like, at whatever point we do, you know, elect a, or select a new reading program, obviously, we would be doing required professional development around that to make sure that our, our teachers had the tools necessary to be successful.
And I guess this one may be for Mr. Dahmer. I know you had a lot of, you know, generalist versus content-specific dichotomies or gradients. It, I can't remember, did you talk about whether we have the right ratio, given all the formative assessments and all the things that are going on? What do we have, like 23, I think, 24?
I think we're staffed for 24. We actually have 20 or 21 currently.
That's been the same the whole time I've been on the board, I think.
It has been the same and less than the model was originally designed for, but I do think that is something we're considering, but we don't want to exactly land on a number until we decide on some of those design elements, right? What kind of support are we expecting coaches to be able to give to teachers in buildings and across the division, right? Or do we want them going to every PLC? Do we want them in every classroom helping us implement curricula and job-embedded, or curricula and guaranteed viable curriculum?
And whenever those standards were when we did this, whenever it was implemented, we didn't have SEL, we didn't have LTIs, we didn't have some of the other supports as well, so...
Correct. So we're kind of looking at a broad picture of that, but in general, I'll say, right, like, most of our coaches' time is taken up with the support that we've guaranteed to novices. So I think as we, as we think about the shifting of maybe that priority versus how many coaches and teachers we have, I think that the conversation for more instructional coaches in order to achieve our goals might be on the table.
Thank you.
I have a question. When I took Algebra I, I was part of a pilot program where we had Algebra I class every day of the week for the first semester, and then after the first semester and the second semester, we switched to every other day, which was the norm. I was wondering, do you have any information about, like, was that program successful or effective? And if so, would it be relevant to addressing that issue with enrollment in Algebra I at the middle school level?
That's a great question. I'm unaware of the data of that pilot, but I think that's something that our design team would love to look at. But I do think even in things like high-intensity tutoring, like, what that schedule looks like to help students be successful in Algebra I is something that we're, we're looking at.
I found it really helpful because it was my first time taking, like, an every other day math class, and that adjustment was really helpful for me.
Thank you.
One last question, sorry, on the formative assessment data, because, I mean, it's formative assessment, right? So it's for kind of teachers to use.
Correct.
Right? Because I know the question's going to come up from parents, from the public, from the school board, about is there anything in that, from that formative assessment data that would be shared? And there's so much of it, obviously, like, to show where we are on track, off track.
I think to the extent that any classroom assessment is shared, you know, teachers would be sharing it in the same way, right? So if I, if I took a unit one test in Algebra I, then, then students would see the results from that, parents would be able to see the results from that, they'd be able to have some conversation. They'd be able to have some conversation with the teacher around that. I don't know that we've got any formal processes for any of those that are there, but I think that for the most part, parents should be able to see results that are, that are there, particularly at the secondary level. You know, it gets a little, I'll have to dig a little deeper for the elementary level because we just don't have some of the same reporting capabilities that we do through, say, the parent portal that shows folks those results.
That'd be great. I think a follow-up kind of answer kind of on that process, because I'm sure that's going to come up as we go forward. Thanks.
And teachers can see how a child did on, in the elementary, I guess, you can look this up too, can look back and see what issues a child had in certain areas or, because I have heard that some teachers can't access previous year's test results and things like that, and they don't, they're kind of going in blind.
So is the question, will they be able to see how they did on the results of this quarter's assessment?
Right. Or previous, is, are the results?
Yep. So we don't, so this is the first year we've had a first-quarter assessment that's here. Teachers can certainly access students' prior-year SOL results. So problematic in third grade because they haven't taken one, but that's why we have growth testing now at the beginning of the year from the state. So teachers would see that, and they can see where students are as a starting point through their growth testing, through the previous year's SOLs, and then they can, then they can do a really deep dive into these assessments. One of the major differences between looking at the SOL results and looking at the quarterly results is that teachers can't see the questions on any of the state-mandated testing. They can see the strand of SOL that it's related to, but they don't know why the student might have gotten it wrong. Was there a distractor answer in there that everyone picked? Was the question worded in a way that might have been confusing to students? And that's some of the work that our teachers are doing now to go back in and kind of validate these assessments too. Hey, if 80% of our class got this question wrong, was there something wrong with the question? Or did we really just not do an adequate job of instructing that standard with the kids?
Okay. I just want to make sure that teachers have access to the information they need on each student to see if they've had issues in the past or...
Yes. They have access through the, through the school testing coordinator, can get teachers any of that past SOL information. Absolutely.
Have the, well, I know that we had the presentation on June 8th from Bellwether, and this is kind of the first follow-up to it. How much exposure have the teachers had to what's being proposed and what the thought pattern is for moving forward together as an overall school division? What kind of exposure have they had to it?
I would say most of that is coming from the individual projects that are on there. So take, for example, the Algebra I team that Craig was talking about. He has representatives from all of our high schools who are Algebra I teachers working together to give input and to solve this problem. When we look at the ELA adoption that Dr. Hayes is leading, there are dozens.
Yeah, we have a teacher represented from every elementary school, a EL teacher represented, special education teachers represented from each school. We have five school administrators, and then we have community partners. So there's a representation from every elementary school within the division. And for instructional coaches, that project at our upcoming Making Connections, teachers will have the opportunity to weigh in. We'll do a protocol, a process to get information from them. We'll also do the same thing with principals to get information, and then also with our lead coaches to get feedback. So each different, a variety of stakeholders are involved with each project based on their connection to the project.
And if you, if you recall also, John O., that at the end of the year last year, when we received the Bellwether report, we ensured that every teacher in the division got to hear that presentation prior to leaving for the summer. So they heard that, and now we're in the implementation phase where it's, and one of the things that was loud and clear from Bellwether is, this is a team effort, right? And we've got to involve lots of folks. So again, looking at the status board that Jamie put together, you should be able to see how we're engaging with stakeholders around all of those different elements of it.
Great. Thank you.
One thing I know, Patrick, you and I have talked about, but I just wanted to mention for everyone listening, just in case there's any, any part that's unclear, the formative assessments are not a part of the grades that those kids are getting for that subject, or they...
Some high school courses have chosen to make them a summative assessment as well. And if they do that, then they, then the assessment falls under the same protocols we use for our grading. Kids get a chance, if they didn't do as well as they hoped on that, they get a chance to get some support from the teacher and get a second chance at that. So for the most part, they are not, usually you don't say formative and summative in the same sentence, right? And so in my mind, formative is how you use the assessment, right? If you give it and you put it away and you never do anything with it, then that's a summative assessment. If you use it, even if there's sometimes a grade attached to it, but if you use the data that's in there to inform your instruction and to make changes to help your students get stronger at the standards, then it becomes a formative assessment.
Okay. So then would the first take be the formative data?
That's the data that we're having folks look at, is where were they on their first attempt with this? And when they come to the second-quarter assessments, they're going to be cumulative. They're going to cover all of the standards that were there. So if we have a standard that students didn't perform as well as we hoped, we'll be able to see at the end of the second quarter whether we've gotten better in that strand.
Okay. Thank you. And then the second thing was about the instructional coaching model, which I really appreciated seeing these axes. I think these are really clear. And I also appreciate the more disciplined approach that we're having with getting important stakeholder feedback. I just didn't, is there a timeline for that? I apologize if I missed it.
No, we didn't put a timeline in. But we are, we're meeting with principals next week, lead coaches next week, instructional coaches towards the second week of November, and we're doing all the teacher sessions and teacher feedback in the beginning of November. And then we're going to get to work pretty quickly in coming up with some kind of design and suggestions that kind of will go along with the budget cycle. And then we'll kind of iterate the design and get feedback on that as we go forward.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
So it looks like whatever that new model is will kick in for '24, '25?
Yes.
But not possibly before that?
I think that if we have some capacity, we would, we have talked about in the spring, trying to play around at a couple of schools with how that might work.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you all very much.
So, thank you. And I think we had next scheduled a quick break for the board before Jamie comes back up to take you through the rest of the working part of the work session. So is that still the desire of the board, to take a quick break?
Sounds great to me.
All right.
So we'll see you back at eight, oh, sorry, 7:55. Thank you.[1078.83]
All right, good evening again. This portion of the evening is our work session around the Bellwether recommendation to develop a theory of change document. So before we begin, I do just want to orient you two with the process that we'll use and what you will do tonight. So this will be an initial step in developing our document. In order to develop the ACPS theory of change, we will gather input throughout the month of October and into November. We held two Zoom sessions for all stakeholders, and a few of you came, so thank you. And we will hold sessions for teachers and other staff on November 6 during our annual professional development day, making connections, and we'll get board input tonight. After that, a small team will synthesize the feedback and draft a theory of change. We will review the document internally in December with the goal of providing the theory of change to the community by this spring. We'll have other opportunities for the community to interact with the draft and also importantly to provide feedback about where that draft is meeting expectations and where we still have work to do. This will help us as we continually refine our systems and structures to be a school system who centers the instructional core. At the same time, we will relaunch our strategic plan with the incorporated Bellwether strategies and any updates made after creating this theory of change. And then annually thereafter, ACPS staff will make time to review and update the strategic plan as well as the theory of change. So how did we get here? As you know, Bellwether prepared four reports outlining the experiences of our students of color with 15 themes and five root causes. Three root causes were related to the instructional core, while two root causes were related to systems and structures. The fourth root cause is why we are here tonight. Bellwether said that one of the systemic root causes is that ACPS does not have a unifying theory of change linking interventions to student outcomes. Or to restate, Bellwether suggested that for every role, both at schools and at central office, it may be unclear how their actions drive outcomes for students. Later on tonight, you'll have the opportunity to review the exact themes in slides nine through 11 in the Bellwether report. We did receive some praise for a lot of the work we're doing. However, in simpler terms, Bellwether says that ACPS stakeholders shared with them the following changes, challenges. Unclear communications and expectations from division leadership sometimes means that we do not all have the same understanding for our desired outcomes. Stakeholders feel there are too many initiatives, sometimes competing priorities. Bellwether suggested that some teachers or principals may not be clear on how they should complete a task or initiative, and there are challenges with access to time or resources to complete projects. And underlying all of this is a tension between central office and the schools. Thus, Bellwether recommended that we develop a theory of change document. Tonight, let's not get too hung up on what a theory of change is or what else it can be called. What Bellwether is suggesting is that we need to have clarity in our roles and how we work together. And actually, looking at the instructional model is a good example of that, about expectations and the work that they're supposed to do. We'll talk about what teachers' most important tasks are and what principals' most important tasks are. That will help us to focus our work and also to make decisions based on this logic. Then we can continue to make changes to our systems and structures to support the logic. This was a systemic root cause about what we can change structurally. So the document will create a shared understanding of how we work together to achieve student outcomes. Then we can use it to check how we're doing. Developing the theory of change is the first step in continuing to identify places for us to improve. So some of us still keep in touch with Akeisha. I don't know if I still have to pay her, but I have called her a few times. I asked her when you made this recommendation, how do you use this as an accountability tool? We heard that in the work sessions we had. People were asking that before then. And she said, "The theory of change serves as a shared understanding of how the work gets done, and specifically how different entities across the organization work together to drive a common outcome." In Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, which is the sample that they provided us, the theory of change served as a tool for designing work. For example, when we designed the rollout of high-quality instructional materials, the theory of change made it clear whose role it was to establish the vision versus whose job it was to create conditions for schools to do the work. And it provided a framework against which to have conversations when the work wasn't being executed according to plan. So what is a theory of change? It's informed by root causes. The logic shows how you think you will get from one place to the next. If you take a look at your whole logic chain, you can see where you might need to look at places to change and get better. And this is the first thing that I always do for program evaluations, and so it helps to sort out which processes could be improved and which are working as they're supposed to. So sometimes it comes in a visual form, like a logic model. Sometimes it's in a written form or an if-then statement, which is what ours will look like. Staff does this work when project planning or submitting a proposal for consideration in the budget, so you've seen it in those forms. So Bellwether gave us our root causes, and we have where we want to go with the ACPS mission statement. So let's do an easier example to get a shared understanding. All right. So your theory of change should be informed by your root causes. In the first example, I made an assumption that I'm not getting up early enough, but this didn't help me get to work on time because my root causes were that I stayed up too late and that I hit traffic. Therefore, I wrote out a more detailed logic chain to say, "If I set a bedtime for myself and if I set my alarm, then I will get up earlier. And if I get up earlier, then I will check my Google Maps for traffic. And if I can pick the best route to work, then I will get to work on time." And there are a lot of places in there to check the logic and make improvements. So we have root causes that Bellwether provided us, and here's our goal, which is the ACPS mission statement. Working together as a team, we will end the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities for our children's success through high-quality teaching and learning for all. We have a theory of action for how we will accomplish this work. It is our strategic plan, and we've updated it with the Bellwether recommendations. We never unpacked this clause, working together as a team, and we'll start some of that tonight. How do we work together as a team to end the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities for our children's success? To build relationships with families and students and to know every student. So Bellwether suggested in their reports that ACPS should create a document internally, but our strategic plan is inclusive of all stakeholders, including family. And we did gather input before making our draft, and we'll continue to do that. Here's an example of a finished product from a division in North Carolina, so you can see what we're doing and what we're not doing. So their logic goes a little something like this. I'm not going to read everything in the small print, but if the school board does these things, and if the superintendent and central office leaders do these things, then principal can do these other things so that every teacher can prepare all students, and we will see our students achieve, succeed, and thrive. And they use this as a framework in conjunction with their strategic plan. So they have this document, a strategic plan, and then their portrait of a learner. All right, so let's get to work. We will move down to your speed dating tables. There's some packets down here with some pens, but basically, we'll have three rounds, and these are the same questions we are using with other stakeholders. They're parallel in form. So you've got some, you had some reading materials, and they're also attached to these packets down here. So we can take a few minutes to refresh if you need it, or we can just jump right into the first question.
Let's refresh.
Okay, we'll take about five minutes. All right, and then we'll start round one with the first question, which, for you as a student, it's the same parallel structure. So as a student school board member, what are the most important things you can do? What do you need from us to make it happen, and how will you engage other students? Okay? Does anyone have any questions?
How do we arrange around the table?
Any, any way you want. You sit across from one person. So between each question, I'm, we'll ask you, when we're done, for you to record your responses on the sheet. So when you open up your packets, you'll have the questions written on there and also some room on the paper. And I'll collect these back from you so I can have all of your responses individually. And I'll try to take some notes while you talk, too. So basically, the structure will be like, you guys will talk across. It's speed dating. I've never done it, but you know, it's a cool thing to do these days. You'll talk across, and then we'll rotate the second question and the third question. So in your packets, you should have just a little paragraph summarizing the research, and then if you want to review the Bellwether side, those are the last thing. And actually, slide 11, I think, is the most important one, the last one, because that's all about the systemic things, the stuff that I was talking about when I was briefing you. There's some more details there.
Matt and Jono will be talking to each other across. Ellen and Kate will be talking to each other across around question one, which is, as a school board member, one of the most important things that we can do to end the...
The research one that I pulled that you probably already looked at. It's from Washington State. It's the same stuff we do. It had really good, you know, the five key points.
And you all talk to each other back...
So that's a good quick step to do.
When we switch, everybody on this side will stay in the same place. As Judy will come down here, Jono's seat, everybody else will slide down, so you've got a new part for the second question. And after each one, you'll have a couple of minutes to record, so if you don't feel like recording while you're talking, you'll have some time for that.
Yes.
So are they ready for question one? Are they reading?
I think they're taking five minutes. Do you have any questions? Okay. Okay. Should I start? Okay. So the first question is, as a school board member or a student school board member, what are the most important things that you can do to end the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities for our children's success?
Okay, one thing I think I could do as a school board member would be to...
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I'm trying to figure out, is there...
Think about the program we started advancing.
Something that makes it more visible.
Maybe like safety...
That makes sense. I mean, obviously, would we vote? But that was kind of like...
Address the achievement. And to make sure that that program is being implemented. Make sure that it's being implemented so that the kids can receive the benefits of it. So that would be one thing, I think.
We have, we have a vision, which is based on the strategy, which we all believe in. And then how do we, to show our...
Right, right.
You show, we show what we want to do through our policy, right? Just through our budget decisions. Like, we're almost in the middle of that shift. Right? And people are talent development, teaching, talking out, like, thinking out loud, right? So this idea of like, there's so much work that we do, especially when we work from home, that we're in your life. I'm thinking about it for myself. You see my product, but you don't see my process. And I do wonder, in some of our comments, like, we can make that tie through, like, okay, I'm choosing to fund, like, I'm choosing to fund reading specialists, and I have a reputation for college stuff. But I'm going to recommend that we should put that as we're employed for. Supporting programs rather than X school, because I know that Black women students that are used to schools and based on the test scores and additional resources.
Yeah, because most of those things that would help gifted students could really help all students, you know, if it's implemented in a certain way. Right. And most of the gifted program things were really like enrichment things, so having it available to all students, enriching all of our kids. That's a good one.
Because to your point is, yes, we do these things, but it might not be a clear why.
Can I turn the other side of some of this to... I guess another one that would be most relevant for that is having more student intern input on certain classes. Like, especially maybe if we give the program this change now, but there's some other programs, I think. Sometimes, if God unscans, that's not saying that everyone could do a good job, but sometimes... Send to classes. And that could end up with that class not being very diverse.
Was if we represent the values of the community and we champion every job. So I was very, I was interested in how simple that if was. And that seems like it fits here. Yeah, it's simple, right? Yeah.
Right. And maybe even the way that we assess...
That's what we do. We're just changing the child, and as you're saying, like, be more transparent about our decision-making. And...
Because I know at one time, once you entered that track, that was it. There wouldn't be a way to sort of leave it. And so that could end up really sort of sidetracking or tracking certain kids.
And then I think, I think we're pretty aligned on the vision. I think we're using the vision of the strategic plan. However, I do wonder if we should have some kind of additional conversation. Like, when I read that, this is what I mean, you say what I, right? Like, because we could all be interpreting that a little bit differently, and it might be worth us having another conversation about, like, what does that mean to me in terms of what I believe? Just to make sure we're all aligned.
Right, right, right.
Right, we might not, right, we might. And so that we go, was new where those...
Culturally responsive teaching. But that would be really important, too. And that could even, in a way, sometimes, if I laugh what you're saying about the, you know, fable fours or certain programs that students would be assigned to, to have.
Well, I might think about that, but not the kids I'm firing, but I'm making this up, five before plans, but like, so, what would we think about that? Yeah, I think that, yeah, we don't do the quiet parts out loud, the...
And then maybe another thing, too, would be...
And I think that's helpful for us as a board, and I think that's helpful for the public.
I think so, too.
Get more input from the community about what the community thinks we should be doing to make sure that all of our students are achieving.
This is the next question, but I, in a way, I also think...
I know we could do a whole lot of surveys, but maybe just trying to get more community involvement.
The cabinet than others, like, kind of that, like, having similar conversations like that about, like, okay, you know, you're met, saying, okay, I am going to put this in front of you. About like, okay, you know, you're met saying, okay, I am going to put this in front of you instead of this.
Information collecting is, at least from a student perspective, is gonna be way more effective than a survey.
Mm-hmm, right.
Just from a student perspective, if somebody told me like, hey, like, if I was in my homeroom class, hey, they're making us take this survey.
For the next.
Naturally would be giving a qualitative answers if I was talking to a person.
Mm-hmm.
This competition is probably that as well. Yeah, I think it would be. Cause I think it's because of the circumstances around when I started, like I think we didn't do a lot of the. We did not. Things we probably, yeah, oh my gosh, no. Yeah, I didn't. Yeah, no, yeah, so I think we should think, what are the things that we, the time that we take? You know, there's the public meeting thing that we have to figure out about this kind of thing. Right, yeah, okay. What are the most important things that I can do to help students achieve an ACPS? So.
And maybe.
So it's the funding, but then also showing the decisions.
Take about 10 more seconds to wrap that.
Okay, maybe in a way even having more programs in the community that would be starting in the schools. But like overlapping into the community in some way.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
Like some of the things that my students might do for their projects, having those projects involved in the community more.
So now that you've had your speed dating conversation, make sure you take just a couple of minutes to write down everything you were thinking.
He's an overachiever.
Okay.
So can she just write for both of us, or do you want us to write for both of us?
As long as it's on somebody's paper, the ideas that you were capturing.
Okay, I'm not sure whether man is legible to anybody except for myself.
So what we're gonna do, I'll wait for everyone to finish, instead of keep talking.
Okay, Opal, so.
I'm gonna have this back row move, cause you guys are squashed up here.
Oh, okay.
Who's staying? This row's staying?
I'll have everybody rotate down and then Dr. Linier go around.
So we move?
Okay.
Rebecca's gonna go where.
Oh, okay, okay.
And we're gonna come down, yes.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Your parentship is so much better, I'm just.
I think.
So do we stay with the same question, or we go question two? Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, okay, okay. All right, Opal, very good, speed dating with you.
Okay, all right, welcome, Grant.
Right, thank you.
All right, so just one thing to add in case this helps some of the discussion. On our smaller team, there's a parent and she was talking about when we make our document on the back having like a rubric. Because in all these conversations when we get input, a teacher or a principal or a family member will say, I really want to be engaged by my teacher in this way, and they give specific examples. So I think if you have one of some of those broad ideas, like I wanna engage with my community, or we're gonna set the vision, having some of the like specific examples, we can create a rubric to hold ourselves accountable on the back with some examples. So our second question is, you talked about all of these things that you need to do and you work very closely with us and the superintendent. So what do you need from the superintendent and the central office staff to make this happen?
I feel like we should go over the things we talked about just a little bit, because that gives us information about like, what are we talking about here?
Good idea.
So we talked about gifted versus talent development programs and that shift in making all these programs more accessible. We talked about more stakeholder input, special education. We talked about support implementing five or four plans. And enforcing that implementation, cause that's a problem.
Okay, we talked about maybe like sometimes with interviews to try to find out what we can do. They have like more person-to-person interviews or surveying instead of, you know, like online or.
It's great that you read yours, cause I didn't have any of those.
Making sure that we can do that process.
So what, as a school board member, our job is to raise issues, to promote community understanding. Say, for example, of the achievement app. We advocate for money, that's a lot of what we do, is we try to sell what we're doing to the board supervisors. We pass concrete policies with metrics attached.
Sharing them with the community.
If you're gonna increase the number of instructional coaches, what is the impact of that?
They develop projects and so maybe sharing some of those projects with the community.
Oversight and ask questions of division leaders all the time.
Superscript and we do that.
Hire the right people.
Okay, one thing I can think of, and I think.
Communicate with the public better, that's always been difficult.
About test results.
We've held, I've held dozens of community forums and have two people show up, you know.
I mean, I'm just.
It's frustrating. Community, foster community engagement to increase community support. And then approve 30 party, third party evaluations of how we're doing, not just judging, measuring each other. The bellwether was one of those. Anyway.
And that's not saying that he doesn't do that anyway, but.
Yeah, it's just something you need.
Yeah, right, right.
First of all, I think, I think there needs to be a better onboarding process for the student representative.
I absolutely agree with you. I mean, I've been saying that for a long time, but I haven't acted. I, I think it really.
So I think the superintendent and central office staff need to.
I mean, there's two key reasons to have student representatives. One is to expose student representatives to local government policy makers. But the other is to be a conduit for information about what students are thinking. But what we do is publish the agenda, and if you don't understand anything on there, why is this issue again? You know, we don't.
But maybe also.
We'll do better.
Like more, firm them, more communications with the community. You know, we always talk about the surveys and I guess a lot of people are fed up with surveys, but still maybe more.
It'll be the new Ryo, and it'll also be the new At-Lar.
But that still wouldn't be something that we would do.
Well, maybe it would be in a way. To us with a suggestion or recommendation, and I wanna know that they've done the disciplined work of getting feedback from stakeholders.
Right, yeah, 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 right, right. Yeah, so maybe more feedback, or more details on the feedback from stakeholders.
I want timely candor from superintendent about issues that arise with staff. And, and Matt does a good job of letting us know if there's problems, but.
And maybe sometimes just even some suggestive.
Broad updates.
Things like if there's a certain.
Last year, Matt.
Maybe more suggestions about things that might work. You know.
Student, school board members could part.
Not getting it from the board, but maybe just coming to us sometimes with more details and arrangements to work with.
And that was useful, because there's a whole lot of issues that never get brought up at the school board meetings.
Like going back to the student representative part, like having someone.
As a school board member, we're always having these conversations, meaning about ending the predictive value of race.
Brief you, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, what, yeah. What, I mean, what you, what we should have done is make sure you were familiar with the bellwether report, why we had it, why we did it. What was unusual about it, what was unusual about it is that it was shared in public, rather than being a quiet diagnostic that you talked to with your doctor and.
A lot of things.
But there's a lot of history with a lot of this, that you shouldn't have, you can't participate as well.
Exactly.
Yeah. The comments you do make are great, actually, Opal, but, but you would be armed and dangerous if you didn't know more about what we were doing. I mean, a lot, I think support, I think the school board, although formally the superintendent works for the school board. Being included in his school walks makes it easier. Support, school board participation.
I also think in terms of emails that we're sending, I think they could be clearer and more. More focused, more, like, I wanna be able to see the subject line and know what we're talking about, cause I think that would be.
I don't know, that would be still for the community there. But I think we do get communications about everything. But maybe sometimes, like for instance, when we found out about the bus scheduling was already done deal. You know, we didn't find about it in advance. So maybe sometimes just finding out about something in time, like before it actually has hit the fan, you know, like in advance, to give us some chance to prepare and get ready for certain things. Maybe timely information sharing.
Going gambling?
Okay, so take, take another minute or two and just finish writing down your, all of your thoughts for that question.
Okay, we got them.
All right, is this legible or anything?
Are we sharing with you?
I used to be a high school English teacher, I can read it all.
Okay, so you're gonna go to see that?
I promise.
You take some?
Yes. Yeah, clear data from superintendent.
Right, okay, all right.
I think that says good.
Okay, good liaison.
Yeah, good liaison, yeah, yeah, yeah. More details on feedback from stakeholders, details on programs for work, thinking about, what's that, record?
I think we're not thinking about.
You were just bragging, Jamie.
I know, I know, I know, but she's done, she's done a good job.
Real transparency and timely implementation.
Right, okay.
Information sharing.
Right, timely information sharing. Okay, very good.
I'll figure it out, I'll figure it out.
Yeah, yeah, that is information sharing.
Oh, yours is good, see, onboarding student reps and school board members, timely candor, broad updates, participation, cabinet meetings, support, school board participation, and school walks.
Okay, showing off.
Clear email. That's great handwriting. You should see mine.
Look at this, this is perfection.
That is really nice.
I know, right. All right, so I go to where Rebecca is?
So you are gonna stand up. You're gonna stand up and you're gonna go where Dr. Rolinda is, and everybody's gonna rotate down one.
Okay.
You guys are stuck like little old seats.
It's nice because we're too tight, we're too tight in.
How can I engage my magisterial district stakeholders to best represent the students in my district?
That is the hardest thing.
It's very, very hard.
It is so.
What's the last question?
All right, so when we have a third change, it's gonna kinda complete, complete a circle. And so all of the other stakeholders, we kinda ask like one up and one down. And so for you all, you know, your circle is your stakeholders, cause you represent your district. So how can you engage your magisterial district stakeholders so that you can best represent the students in your district? And for you, it could be the same question or other students.
So if it's asking.
It could be any stakeholders.
If it's asking about just representing the students in the district, well, they're all in one place.
So like, one thing, Patrick and some of the other staff, they, they went to a national conference, it's called Leader 21. And like they, they were doing some stuff around human resources, because you know, our workforces are really unstable right now.
But I'm, I'm.
And so one of the things that we learned, like as a takeaway, and we've been talking about, is how to have like large group meetings where you invite people in and they just basically come to a meeting. And there's really no agenda, you don't, you don't like do a bunch of PowerPoints and stuff, but you basically are there to, to maybe share a couple of things that the, that the school system's working on, that they need to know about, but then the rest of it is just feedback. Just allowing people to criticize or ask questions or do whatever, and responding to them, not in a defensive way, but articulating, right? And clarifying and listening and saying, well, we could change, you know, since we could change, we'll take that back to the drawing board. So I was brainstorming over the past few days. And what we're gonna, what we're gonna try is doing that on, on workdays, because the teachers will already be at work.
I've gone to PTO meetings with like three people.
You know, we're gonna be the cabinet, which is like the staff that's here, who pick like four places to go. And then, you know, put out communications weeks in advance, we'll have coffee and doughnuts. It'll be during work time when the teachers don't have to do professional development and things like that, but they won't have students either. And so they could just come to these meetings. So that's, that's one thing we're gonna try.
Spaghetti dinner at the school.
So for me, I think the biggest thing I do is talk with people.
In the foundation we've been talking about.
Cause.
Maybe family night, maybe you have washer and drawers. You know, at the school, maybe you have, you know, computer literacy, maybe you have adult literacy classes, maybe you have vouchers for something or other. You know, I don't know.
The reading curriculum is something I've talked about with my peers.
What do they say?
A lot of people don't know about it, which is the biggest answer.
Did you, so I went to the, did you go to any of the Hispanic heritage?
No, no, no.
So we went, John and Graham and I went to the college day. It was just awesome.
From my perspective, not to like turn on or anything, but I think I'm doing a good job at.
Alumni, A+ alumni. Hispanic and in college or just out of college, just talking about the experience and just like they had a.
So your strategy, your, your, your strategy, your strategy really is to make, take, make every time that you're talking with one of your peers an opportunity to listen to them, hear what their concerns are, and then also try to share information in a way that they'll understand it. And don't really overlook any opportunity.
Yeah, cause another thing I was talking about with Mr. Page was, from my perspective as a student. I will, even though I'm into politics and stuff, I will always be more attentive and more engaged in giving better answers when I'm talking to someone face to face than when I'm doing a survey.
Yeah, yeah.
And I.
I mean, I've gone to Eric's, the, the.
I felt so accomplished.
Well, you have too, the community breakfast at Center to engage with other organizations or other, you know, businesses in the community.
In what way?
I think that's important. Cause I think if we're really going to engage. I mean, for me, there's.
How old are you, Opal, can you vote yet?
No, I'm 17.
But then there's how do you engage people who don't have kids in the school now? I mean, they may have, they may have actually been in our schools, how do you engage that?
That's like something I've had to learn to do too, because I'm more of like, you know how people can be task oriented or people oriented? I mean, mostly I'm not super people oriented, and so I've had to learn over time to basically, if someone's talking to me, even my, even my wife, right? Sometimes I go home and she'll start talking to me, and I start doing something else, she's like, she'll be like, you're not, every time I try to talk to you, you walk away or you're doing something. So I've had to learn just to kinda stop where I am, sit down, or look the person in the face and just really listen to what they're saying. And, and recognize that that's like a gift that that person's giving me, that they will talk to me and communicate with me.
Yeah, I mean.
But, I mean. In, in the foundation, we're talking about fundraising, and you know, we had, I talked to this fellow who was a fundraiser for UVA. Well, he had a list of alumni, you know? And, you know, asking an alumnus to, that's a, that's a world call. And of course, they're also, you know, much older than us alumni, but I think we could do a much better job.
And I think that'll be where you get the most information.
But I think for me, I'm very interested in looking at the Lansley campus as not just a community school, but a community campus.
Yeah.
So if you did have a health center.
So one strategy I do as well is every year I go out and visit every school for about an hour. And I know it doesn't sound like much, but it's, you know, once a week for sure, I get out to a school and I'll walk around with the principal. I interact with teachers and staff that are at the school, I interact with students. The problem with that, the, the positive of it is that I, I do, it gives me some reality, like grounding things in reality. And every week I write that weekly check-in that I was talking about. And I, and it's a chance for me to celebrate the schools. The downside of it is, is it's, it is, it's like casting a wide net, but not like a deep, like it's not. a deep, like, it's not deep, you know?
You know.
So it's more about just showing a presence, I guess.
PTOs are the most of the ones with the most affluent parents.
But it would be interesting, to your point, to think about, like, possibly scheduling some type of an assembly or something during the intervention period, and, um, you know, it'd be interesting to see if students would show up.
Yeah.
When I was principal at Alamo High School, um, during our intervention period, I did something called Student Senate, and every, every, there were ninety-nine classrooms at the school at that time, and.
I should, it's just so big I can't even stand them.
I know. And every, I had every intervention period send two students to the senate. So we had a hundred and eighty kids there, and they, they were kids that were hanging out in the intervention period, so typically they weren't like, you know, they were kids that were your regular kind of everyday kids, and then I had, I would be there with the student council president, and we would just talk about what was going on at the school and hear what their concerns were, and we did it four times a year, and it was, it was great fun because for a lot of those kids, they were like, wait, what am I doing here? You know?
But I still think that sounds really effective.
Oh, yeah, it was fun.
Yeah.
The kids were fun, and we, and we heard things, it was like, there was a kid, student named James Boer, he was the first student council president I did that with, and he, and he said, you know, this really is changing what I think is important at the school.
Is about the end of the time for that round, so take another minute or two to finish up your conversation and finish writing down your thoughts.
All right. Thanks for talking with me, Opal.
I will reach out to the community if you have something you would say. I mean, I've got areas to.
See, what Patrick was supposed to say was, formative assessment is assessment, summary assessment is assessment.
But I actually, I got hired as a sub first.
He just kind of, he took a long time. And, and assessment can be both.
I think the sub helped me.
Then there's high stakes assessments.
Which could be for you too.
No. High stakes assessments are always.
Here we are. Do you want to?
He does give five days.
I'll give this back to you for a second, and then I'll, so we are in a conversation. Do you need yours back?
Wow.
I wasn't teaching for you.
But I was gonna collect it, but take, take back those five because you have it out yourself.
I did, no.
Definitely, you might be looking.
Got it, I took copies, now.
Yeah.
It's good.
I thought you were saying.
Okay, so to wrap up our work session, we'll just spend a few minutes talking about, what did you hear from each other that you want to share out with the group?
I'm really question by question.
We're not gonna go question by question, we'll just, whatever people want to talk about that came up while you were speaking.
So I could go first, just, but, uh, so I had the pleasure of meeting with Jono on the first question, Ellen on the second, and Opal on the third. On the first thing, Jono talked about the board setting bold expectations and then having accountability and recognition for achieving them, or achieving mileposts, creating sustainability of things that work, accountability for follow-through on goals, and a simple vision that can be communicated in ways that stakeholders would understand, and being present in the work. Um, Ellen really kind of boiled down the second question to ensuring that the superintendent and his staff grant, make sure that there's open access for the board to staff and interactions with staff and, and information, ultimately trust, open and consistent communication, and then follow-through. Um, and then being sure that the central staff supports all the staff. And then when I talked with Opal, it was a really good conversation because I kept thinking about engaging as like big groups, you know, having big meetings, big assemblies, things like that. Her way of learning from stakeholders is really taking every opportunity and having conversations with her peers to use that as an opportunity to listen deeply to what they're talking about and what their concerns are, and then also, when, when appropriate, you know, offering information that would empower them.
Um, with respect to question one, and maybe that's the only one I'll answer, I mean, I see the role of the school board as, as Matt said, one of oversight and setting expectations, but it's also advocacy, both to the community and to our colleagues on the Board of Supervisors. It is working hard to get the finances in place that we can do what we want to do, both in terms of creating learning spaces and supporting the staffing that we need to get the work done. Um, also hiring the right people. I mean, we don't have a big hiring window, Dr. Haas, but, I mean, setting, um, you know, that's part of, of developing the leadership to take any kind of strategies forward. Um, and then I think, uh, work with the soup to engage third-party evaluations like we did with Bellwether. I think that's important to have a, a fresh set of eyes on things now and then to make sure that we're, we're in the right ballpark.
I'm gonna jump to question three. Um, one of the things Rebecca and I talked about is how to make it easy for parents to engage or stakeholders, district stakeholders to engage, because we know that a lot of parents are frankly exhausted from working. So what can we do to make it easy to communicate with us and to engage with them? Being present is one of them.
And in, uh, group, in, uh, question three also, Jono and I talked about, maybe even organizing groups for parents so that the parents might be able to, from each other, gather information on how to help their students better, or just, sort of just knowing each other, they might be able to communicate better and work within the school better.
And, and another part to that too was simply inviting parents to come who normally don't come to the schools so that they, they let them know they're welcome. That's something that Kate and I ran into when we did the, um, meetings in seventeen or eighteen, and there were parents.
Way back time.
Way back then, yeah, and, uh, uh, parents from certain Hispanic populations never went to the schools in their country, so they didn't know that they were, would be welcome or invited to come, uh, here. And schools like, uh, the Old Kale School back in that era did a great job of welcoming in parents, and it's continued through the Mountain View days, and, um, it's, it's, it's something that teachers enjoy, it's something that the parents enjoy, and the kids are thrilled.
I'll take a stab at, at the third one too. Um, I always like to think of our stakeholders as not just the families of our students, but the broader community because the broader community is probably, is the majority of the, of the population in Alamo County, and they're the ones who, who approve the, you know, the tax increases, and we really do have a job in engaging the greater community. I mean, I've gone to some of the, um, community breakfasts, I mean, I think those are good. I think we need to build on that and get more, more folks showing up. Um, you know, when we have a specific ask, like, again, in the way back time for the, the school bond referendum, we went around, we went around and did the circuit, you know, with the real estate groups and the Kiwanis and the Rotary Clubs and the Senior Center, and went and talked to people about specific things, and we got a great response. Uh, we've not done that, I've not done that or been a part of that. I know, um, I think, I think it's challenging enough sometimes just to find the time to go and visit our schools, but I think, I think that's important to do. And we also talked a bit about engaging our alumni better, because I think for a variety of reasons I'd like to do that, just to get some feedback on if, if we are measuring our complete success by how many kids we graduate, I think five years out we might get different kinds of responses about how well we have in fact prepared citizens and workers and people. But I also think they could be a great source of support, too. Um, anyway.
Another thing that we talked about with number three is some of the great work that's been going on in the schools to better engage students like Hispanic Heritage Month. Um, Jono Graham and I went to the college day for that. Um, so I think tapping into some of that great work and being a part of some of it will help, you know, for us to understand a little bit and represent students who we are not hearing from as much, and families ultimately who we're not hearing from as much, and importantly, to balance influence and representation so that we can hear and represent all of our students. Uh, I was looking at this, the Charlotte Mecklenburg if and then so that thing, and for the first question, it says, if the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education represents the values and priorities of community and secures needed funds, provides necessary policy and advocates for all children, which makes sense, I think, for any school division and ours too. So for the first question, Rebecca and I were really talking about how we can do that by increasing the transparency of our decision-making and really saying all the parts out loud when we have these discussions and having more robust discussions when we're talking about funding, like, does this really make sense to our goal? Um, one thing Rebecca shared that I love is that she has that goal written down and then makes sure that every decision that she makes centers that. Is that correct?
Yeah. No, and, and another piece of that is, to your point, is like this thinking out loud. I think oftentimes we, you know, because, you know, the hours get late, um, you know, have shorter comments, and maybe some of this is this, this idea of thinking out loud and working out loud where we really are saying not just kind of our question, but I'm asking this question because if I center on this goal, this does not seem to be in line with my goal, and how do we, you know, make some of that our thinking, which is in our head, kind of more, more public, and showing how it is our decisions are tied to these, kind of this goal that we have centrally.
Um, so just as a reminder, we're gonna use all of this input to draft a theory of change internally, and then we will be bringing that back for review this winter and presenting it to the public this spring. So do you have any more questions about this work or anything that we talked about tonight? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Oh, did you have a question?
Oh.
I, I did just have one other thought that I was thinking of after, and I know Mr. Domer's gone, um, home, but I, one thing about the instructional coaching model, and I wonder if it's part of a culture here that's unspoken, is, you know, one of the axes was, oh, can people come from outside the division or people have to be from inside the division? And I think in looking at that axis and just saying, again, the quiet part out loud, um, I think we've had some really good hires from outside the division, and I think it's really important when you're looking at change work to get fresh perspectives. Um, so I'm glad that we're looking at that, and then I hope that that continues throughout our thinking in all this.
I do have one more question, Jamie. Um, you said in terms of developing the theory of change, then it would impact our strategic plan?
So we have a cabinet retreat in December, we'll have just the draft theory of change then, but I think if we can look at some of these things that we're writing down in terms of accountability, and you gave some examples tonight, right? Like you said, if we really are listening, um, sharing our thoughts with the community and an example is thinking out loud while we're speaking, and you gave a lot of other examples, if we sort of have a rubric with our theory of change with some key examples, um, I think that will help inform the thinking in checking our strategic plan and what we have in there for strategies and also what we're prioritizing as our strategies. We also will continue to just use this document as another lens to think about the structures that we have in place across the division. Um, you know, we were looking at systemic changes in root causes and recommendations four and five, and so there's a lot of procedural things that we do across the division that I think if we were really centering instruction and trying to collaborate with principals and getting input from teachers and all of these things, it would look different. And so when, when we're making decisions about projects and things that we're implementing, how do we do that so that we're doing these things that we say we want to do? Um, and it won't be perfect, but it will be another way to think about it before you jump into the work. All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm gonna collect all your tests. No. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't write down.
Yeah, I just, I didn't.
Wrote down.
Thank you very much, Jamie.
I didn't want to.
All right, we're back, we're down to other business by school board members and/or superintendent. Any other business? All right, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.